Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order the first meeting of the Boston City Council for the municipal year 2024. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
My name is Liz Braden. I am the District Nine Councillor, representing Alston Brighton. As a senior member by age, I will preside over the meeting until the election of the City Council President. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Councillor Braden.
Here.
Councillor Coletta.
Here.
Councillor Durkin.
Here.
Councillor Fernandez-Andersen.
Here.
Councillor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Councillor Flynn.
Here.
Councillor Luizhen.
Here.
Councillor Mejia.
Here.
Councillor Murphy.
Here.
Councillor Pepin.
Here.
Councillor Satana.
Here.
Councillor Weber.
Here.
And Councillor Worrell.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I will ask for all councillors and guests to invite our clergy. Reverend Laura Everett, please come down. At this time, I ask all councillors and guests to please rise for the invocation, and after the invocation, please remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. It is my pleasure to introduce the Reverend Laura Everett. For the past 12 years, the Reverend Laura Everett has served as the Executive Director of the statewide Massachusetts Council of Churches. She is an ordained pastor in the United Church of Christ, a regular writer. Reverend Everett has written a book about urban spirituality and serves as a chaplain to the community of transit justice activists when someone dies in the streets. She's also a textile artist who teaches mending as a means of community repair and racial justice work. Laura is dedicated to equitable, excellent, and anti-racist coverage in sports and covers Boston's professional women's teams at bostonwomensports.com. Reverend Everett lives in Jamaica Plain with her wife Abby, who teaches middle school Latin, and they are a proud union family. Please welcome Reverend Everett, and thank you for being here today.
Dear friends, hear these words from the prophet Isaiah, the forty-third chapter, verses 15 through 21. "I am the Lord, the Holy One, the Creator of Israel your king, thus says the Lord, who makes a way in the sea, a path in mighty waters; brings out chariot and horse, army and warrior; they lie down, they cannot rise; they are extinguished, quenched like a wick. Do not remember the former things, or consider the things of old; I am about to do a new thing. Now it is springing forth, do you not perceive it? I will make a way in the wilderness, and rivers in the desert; the wild animals will honor me, the jackals and the ostriches, for I give water in the wilderness, rivers in the desert, to give drink to my chosen people, the people who I formed for myself, so that they may declare my praise." Let us pray. Holy One, your people humble themselves to pause before so audacious a task as governance, to remember that we are not gods. We did not create the waters, or the mountains, the hills, or the desert; we did not create this building, this city, this earth upon which we stand. Oh God, your people humble themselves to pause before so audacious a task as governance, to remember that we are not gods, and to awe at the new thing about to begin. The prophet asks us to stop, to wait, to still ourselves, and slow down, and see this new thing about to begin, to remember that it is you who brought us through the mighty waters, you who parted the sea, you who made a way when there was no way, you who brought about liberation and freedom, you, and you alone. We paused to remember this new thing. We paused to remember where we have been. And because you are a gracious God, because it is a new year, because we are a new people gathered for a new task, the prophet claims, "Do not remember the former things, or consider the things of old. Form us, O God, into a new body, into a new people. Form this assembled body, O God, into a new council. Do a new thing, O Lord. Give to each gathered sufficient portion of courage to hold fast to their convictions, sufficient portion of humility to acknowledge when they are in error, sufficient portion of wisdom to seek counsel when they do not know, sufficient portion of kindness to meet every person as if they are encountering the Messiah themselves, sufficient portion of patience to meet the enduring work of systemic change, and sufficient portion of grace to forgive when they are wrong. Most of all, O God, give this body, your City Council, joy. God, give them joy and imagination, to dream as you would dream. God, let this City Council imagine, as the prophet Isaiah did, the imagination to be painted in their waking and their sleeping. Water in the wilderness, rivers in the desert, give them drink to the people who have thirsted for healing and justice for so long, a song in a weary throat. Give them songs in a weary throat for a people parched for so long. And, O God, give this assembled body joy, joy to dream together, to imagine together, to cast a vision together of life abundant for all people across this city. You who make a way in the wilderness, you who make rivers in the desert, you who say there is enough for all, you who promise we can cast off the carceral mindset and seek liberation, not as a commodity to possess, but a joy to be shared. Help us, O God, to believe that there is abundance, so much that we need not cling, but share; we need not hoard, but offer; we need not possess, but free. Do this new thing, O God. Make us new, O Lord. Bless this body, this council, each person under the sound of my voice. Reform us, make us new, and make us one. This council bless this city, bless this Commonwealth to your glory. We know you by many names. I claim you again, my rock and my redeemer. Let the people say aye and amen." (APPLAUSE).
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Since I'm the chair, I will use the opportunity to share a poem by Seamus Heaney. Seamus Heaney won the Nobel Prize for Literature, and he died 10 years ago in Northern Ireland. He wrote this poem as the Good Friday Agreement was being signed way back in 1997. The poem is "From the Cure at Troy." Human beings suffer; they torture one another; they hurt and get hard. No poem, or play, or song can fully right a wrong inflicted and endured. History says, "Don't hope on this side of the grave," but then, once in a lifetime, the longed-for tidal wave of justice can rise up, and hope and history rhyme. So hope for a great sea change on the far side of revenge; believe that a farther shore is reachable from here; believe in miracles, and cures, and healing wells. Call miracle self-healing, and utter self-revealing, double take of feeling. If there's fire on the mountain, and lightning, and storm, and a god speaks from the sky, that means someone is hearing the outcry and the birth cry of a new life at its term. It means, once in a lifetime, that justice can rise up, and hope and history rhyme. Thank you. Next order of business. Everyone's here. Move on to the next order of business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of December 14, 2023. Seeing and hearing no objection, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting, as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docet 0117?
Docet number 0117, Councillor Braden offered the following: Order that the City Council adopt the City Council Rules of Municipal Years 2022 through 2023, except for Rule 36, council committees as temporary rules for 2024 and 2025 municipal years.
The chair moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of Docet 0117. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended, and the order for the adoption of temporary council rules has been passed. The next item on the agenda is the election of the City Council President. The chair recognizes Councillor Durkin.
I move to open up the floor for nominations for Council President.
Councillor Durkin moves to open the floor for nominations. Councillor Durkin has moved to open the floor to take nominations for the City Council President for municipal years 2024 and 2025. Do I hear a second? Thank you. The floor is open for nominations. The chair recognizes Councillor Coletta.
Thank you, Madam Dean. It is a great honour to rise today to nominate Councillor-at-Large Ruth C. Luizhen.[763.25][763.25](APPLAUSE). The first Haitian-American to serve on the Boston City Council on Haitian Independence Day, to lead this body to its next chapter as Council President. Thank you.
I've been informed by the clerk that we don't need a second for the nominations. Are there any other nominations? Councillor Flynn?
Madam President, I would like to nominate City Councillor Julia Mejia for Boston.
Thank you, Councillor Flynn. First of all, go back to Councillor Luizhen. Do you accept this nomination?
Thank you to Councillor Coletta for nominating me, and I know that we didn't need to second, but I know Councillor Warrell was going to second, so thank you for placing your faith in me, for nominating me, and I humbly ask for the support of my colleagues so that we can continue moving this city forward. I'm eager to engage in this additional responsibility and service, building a stronger body for all of us, so I do accept this nomination, and I look forward to serving all of you with your vote. Thank you so much.[855.26][855.26](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Councillor Luizhen. Councillor Mejia?
I want to...
Oh, pardon.
Yes.
Councillor Mejia?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, but while I do appreciate Councillor Flynn putting my name out there, I respectfully decline. I think that it's important for us to recognize that this moment in this body requires us to really bring everyone together, regardless of our political differences, and while I know that I have the award-winning personality to do just that, I think it's important for us to recognize that the body here, right, has an opportunity to really show up in this chamber, in the way that we have been elected to do so, and that is being reflective of the community that we serve, and making sure that we understand that who we are accountable to are the people who put us in this seat.[915.63][915.63](APPLAUSE). And because of that, the only people that I want to speak on behalf of are the people that put me here, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Mejia.[929.13][929.13](APPLAUSE). The chair recognizes Councillor Fernandez-Andersen.
Madam Chair, thank you. I'd like to move to close nominations.
Councillor Fernandez-Andersen moves to close nominations and proceed to the election of the Council President. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing no objection, nominations from the floor for the President of the City Council is now closed. Pursuant to the City Charter, elections for the City Council officers must be made by a voice vote. When called by the clerk, each member will state the name of the person for whom they vote. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Braden.
Councillor Luizhen.
Councillor Coletta.
Councillor Luizhen.
Councillor Durkin.
Councillor Ruth C. Luizhen.
Councillor Fernandez-Andersen.
Councillor Luizhen.
Councillor Fitzgerald.
Councillor Luizhen.
Councillor Flynn.
Councillor Luizhen.
Councillor Luizhen.[995.23][995.23](LAUGHTER). Councillor Luizhen.[997.23][997.23](APPLAUSE). Councillor Mejia. Councillor Murphy. Councillor Pepin.
Councillor Luizhen.
Councillor Satana.
Councillor Luizhen.
Councillor Weber.
Councillor Luizhen.
And Councillor Worrell.
Councillor Luizhen.[1020.13][1020.13](APPLAUSE).
It's my pleasure to hand over the gavel to you. I wish you all the best as our President of the City Council, and may we have a successful to your term, under your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1138.01][1138.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Thank you.[1141.01][1141.01](APPLAUSE). Wow. I am just overcome with emotion, with gratitude, and I just want to thank each and every one of my colleagues. That hub is real. We have real work to do, and I'm so excited to do it alongside each and every one of you. As everyone knows, or may people know, I am Ruth C. Luizhen, Boston City Councillor-at-Large, and now your Boston City Council President.[1187.13][1187.13](APPLAUSE). I am not here as the first black woman to hold this seat, and to that I honor Attorney General Andrea Campbell and former Mayor Kim Chaney, who blazed a trail. Thank you to my...[1206.01][1206.01](APPLAUSE). Thank you to my Haitian community for being here on Independence Day.[1214.58][1214.58](APPLAUSE). This is the most important day in our culture. And you all are here. I pulled you away from your subjumu. Don't worry, we're going to have soup for everyone after, but thank you.[1228.83][1228.83](LAUGHTER). I want to thank Madam Dean, Councillor Braden, for presiding over this meeting. Thank you. I'm so grateful to my colleagues for your faith in me to lead this body. I hope each of you know that this is not a task I take lightly, and will work every day to make sure that this body does the work of the people and that we do it together. I'm so excited to work alongside you to actualize the visions for this incredible city of ours, to collaborate on constituent issues, and to help highlight your unique strengths and your talents that earned you a seat on this august body. From East Boston to South Boston, Charlestown to Mattapan, Roxbury to West Roxbury, Beacon Hill to Mission Hill, Brighton to Savin Hill, we've got work to do to build a city that is affordable for our working-class families, that responds to the potholes and trash issues and the lights that we need in our parks, that centers repairing past harm, works on enhancing community safety, and has school environments where each student can thrive and realize their limitless potential. Under my leadership, we will continue to center equity in everything we do here in the city of Boston, knowing that the task is a daunting one, given our historical failures to show up for those who our governments have marginalized, like people of color, immigrants, our LGBTQ+ neighbors, those who are disabled and differently abled, our veterans, our returning citizens. But I have faith that we are up to the task. Before I get to more of my colleagues, there are some people I would like to thank. I want to thank former President Ed Flynn for your commitment to...[1335.01][1335.01](APPLAUSE). For your commitment to and belief in this body. I know you were presented with challenges during your presidency, and I'm grateful for your leadership and how much you care about residents of our great city. During our final City Council meeting of last year, we didn't have an opportunity to thank you, and as I thank my colleagues who service it has also ended, now former councillors Ricardo Arroyo, Frank Baker, Michael Flaherty, and Kendra Lara, I also want to make sure to thank you. I know that being President was an honour for you, an honour that I will now experience, and I'd like you to come up so I can give you these flowers, President Flynn.[1375.42][1375.42](APPLAUSE).
Yeah![1401.13][1401.13](APPLAUSE).
For being with us today and for presiding over today's inauguration. As an alum of this body, you hold it in high regard, that I know, and we value your partnership with this council as you continue to map out a bold vision and execution for our city. I know this work has not been easy for you, as a first woman of color elected mayor of this city. I salute you for your courage, resolve, and dedication, despite all the noise and at times hardships for your family and loved ones.[1435.13][1435.13](APPLAUSE). I look forward to the continued work and collaboration and accountability. I want to thank central staff, without whom none of our work would be possible.[1451.01][1451.01](APPLAUSE). So, yes. So, yes. Yes.[1455.01][1455.01](APPLAUSE). Hey, did y'all hear Megan earlier? Megan got a voice. So I want to thank Michelle, who's out on parental leave, Candace, Shane, Juan, Ron, Megan, Lorraine, Ethan, Arnita, Cora, and Parishma. Without you, we would not be here. I want to thank outgoing Staff Council Christina O'Donnell for her 12 and a half years of service to this body.[1486.83][1486.83](APPLAUSE). I want to thank the Clerk's Office collectively. Thank you, Afghani Stol, Clerk. Let's thank you in Greek. Alex, for your work and for your team. Darcy Allen and everyone on the sixth floor. I want to thank the municipal officers who always are responsive and help keep us safe. Thank you to the custodial staff who keep our offices clean and property management for quickly turning around our offices.[1510.01][1510.01](APPLAUSE). I want to thank the electeds in the House. I see State Rep Russell Holmes, and we've heard him, okay? He's in the House.[1519.01][1519.01](APPLAUSE). State Rep Chris Worrell. I think he has... He's related to someone on this body. State Rep John Moran. Oh, he was here earlier. State Rep Sam Montano. There you go. Sam, give a little wave. Give a little wave. Okay, there you go. And earlier at our inauguration, we had State Auditor Diana DeZoglio and District Attorney Kevin Hayden. We also have in the House former State Senator Linider Sannifori.[1546.13][1546.13](APPLAUSE). Former City Councillor Peter Jackson.[1552.35][1552.35](APPLAUSE). Former City Councillor Mike Ross, I'm not sure if he is in the House now, but he was at the inauguration.[1559.48][1559.48](APPLAUSE). Former City Councillor Larry Decara, and former City Councillor Kenzie Bach.[1565.01][1565.01](APPLAUSE). So back to my colleagues. I welcome all of you, and I welcome the newbies especially. I welcome my colleague from Dorchester, representing District Three, John Fitzgerald.[1578.63][1578.63](APPLAUSE). I look forward to working with you as you continue your family's legacy of service, and I know your father would be proud of you today.[1588.76][1588.76](APPLAUSE). I welcome my colleague from Jamaica Plain, representing District Six, Ben Weber.[1597.35][1597.35](APPLAUSE). I'm excited for you to bring your experience working on the side of the underdog and working people to this chamber, and I'm excited to have another lawyer on the council. To both Ben and John, in getting to know both of you, I'm excited for you to bring your senses of humor and levity to this chamber and to this work. Y'all don't know, but they're both really funny. You'll see.[1623.23][1623.23](LAUGHTER). I welcome my colleague from Mission Hill, now resident of Dorchester-at-Large City Councillor Henry Santiana.[1631.01][1631.01](APPLAUSE). I'm so excited to work with you, representing the entire city, centering equity and the needs of young people in our city. I welcome my colleague from Rosendale, representing District Five, Enrique Pepe.[1648.01][1648.01](APPLAUSE). I know my home district is in good hands, and I look forward to what you will bring to this council, given your deep knowledge and understanding of how we serve our neighborhoods. To both Enrique and Henry, I'm eager for our collaboration and what we will be able to build. Now, everyone, traditionally, although we've broken all those rules, there is no public participation in council meetings, but this one is different. Are there any Dominicans in the room?
Woo!
Okay. Now, are there any Haitians in the room?
Woo!
Now, can I hear from both the Haitians and the Dominicans in the room?[1691.51][1691.51](APPLAUSE). I love it. That is possibility, that is unity. Our island, which is often referred to as Hispaniola, we reclaim our Taíno name of Kiskaya, and we work together.[1706.23][1706.23](APPLAUSE). We will do it with our colleague from Dorchester-at-Large City Councillor and Dominican, Julia Mejia.[1733.73][1733.73](APPLAUSE). Whose birthday is also today, so happy birthday, Councillor.[1740.01][1740.01](APPLAUSE). Julia, thank you for your focus on community, for everything from residential kitchens to passing the reparations task force. Your work for all means all, is seen and felt, and we will work on all of the issues together as a body. We will use our time and talents to elevate the communities and work that matters to our residents. In addition to Councillor Mejia, I want to welcome back all of my colleagues and thank them for their work and focus. My colleague from Dorchester-at-Large Councillor Aaron Murphy, and your relentless focus[1768.88][1768.88](APPLAUSE) and your relentless focus on the needs of our families and schoolchildren. My colleague from East Boston, District One City Councillor Gabriella Gigi Coletta.[1778.48][1778.48](APPLAUSE). And your commitment to climate and environmental justice issues across the city and the inner workings of this body. My colleague from South Boston, Councillor and past President Ed Flynn.[1791.23][1791.23](APPLAUSE). And your focus on veterans, the disabled, our first responders, and issues of language access. our first responders, and issues of language access. My colleague from Dorchester and my Vice President. I feel like we never had any family here. We should work on that. I thank you for your deep, deep commitment to reversing budget neglect, not only in District Four, but in black and brown neighborhoods throughout our city. My colleague from Roxbury and my sister in service, District Seven City Councilor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. And your laser focus on racial equity and budget accountability. My colleague from Beacon Hill, District Eight City Councilor Sharon Durkin. Your love for the city, our institutions, our teams, and everything that makes it what it is. I love the energy that you bring to this chamber. And last but not least, our dean, my colleague from Brighton, District Nine City Councilor Liz Braden. Who does this job with a steadfast commitment to both detail and justice, ensuring that our residents are safely and adequately housed. And last but not least, to our 14th City Councilor Michael in the back. We're not a city council without Michael. And now, on a personal note, I wanna thank God the Almighty for guiding my steps and my calling. And for reminders that He did not give any of us a spirit of fear, but instead spirits of power, love, and self-discipline. I thank my parents, who laid the foundation for all that is possible for me today. My dad, busy on the camera, I'll be right back. They came to this country from Haiti, poor, black, not speaking the language, and sacrificed so much for me and my three sisters and our entire extended family. They are our pillar. I am because of your strength. Wabba, I don't call my father dad, I call him by his name. Robert, and I stand on your shoulders every day. My sisters are here. The oldest is not here yet, but Alman, Kentia, and Wadlin, thank you for always having my back. I love each and every one of you so much. We will always be Robert's four headaches. He is very much a girl dad. There are lots of other family members who are in the House, aunts, uncles, cousins, family friends. Thank you for how you all relentlessly show up for me and love on me. I'm grateful to God for your support. Adrienne, I'm grateful for you spending your birthday with me, Bon Fett. It's like my great aunt. To my cherished friends, loved ones, and spiritual leaders, thank you for being an ear, a shoulder, and a source of renewal for me. I love all of you. To my supporters, you all are incomparable. I am ever grateful for how we show up for each other in community to collectively build the inclusive, equitable, and prosperous city that we all deserve. To the Haitian community, mesiampil pututzipon obamo. I would not be here without all of you. I am proud that I get to represent you and try to bring you all honor with everything that I do. Today, January 1st, is Haitian Independence Day, where we celebrate being the first free black republic in the Western Hemisphere. And the only country in the world founded from a slave revolt. That's a big deal. Today, we continue the march towards true liberation as insecurity plagues our island nation, but we remain committed to our people abroad and here, where Boston is home to the third-largest Haitian diaspora, and as we see the new arrival of Haitians in our city seeking refuge. I stand on the shoulders of former State Representative Marie St. Fleur and former State Senator Leonardor Sinefori. And continuing to make sure that there are Haitian voices in our government. To my staff, to my staff, to my staff. You are the very best. Emily, Hodin, Cindy, and Jessie, thanks for giving our office structure, for showing up in community, and for your commitment to excellence and justice and the work that comes out of our office. I simply would not be here without you. And I know that all of my colleagues could say the same thing about their own staff. And to my new councils, you'll see, you are nothing without a good staff. And lastly, and most importantly, to the residents of this great city, it is an honor to serve each and every one of you on the Boston City Council. When I first spoke on the council two years ago as a new elected, I shared the goal of shared prosperity and a vision where we use the city's fiscal strength to meet the needs of working people in our city. Our city boasts of some of the best institutions, from universities to hospitals to life sciences. We have a strong AAA bond rating, strengths we can be using more to build schools and to build housing. We have the strength of diversity of our neighborhoods. But at times, the education gaps, the housing crisis, and disparities, and health and wealth outcomes can make us feel like there are two different Boston's. Our work is to combat that and to combat that together. While others try to divide our city and pontificate about how old and new Boston is reflected in comparison to leadership of Boston 15 years ago and the leadership of today, a change in the leadership and makeup of this body ushered into existence by former At-Large City Councilor and now Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, I reject the old and new dichotomy. I believe in a true Boston, one that has always had the riches of cultures and races and backgrounds that we see now in the halls of power, one that embraces the rich Irish-American and the rich Italian-American and the rich African-American histories of our city, that celebrates the Latino community and the Asian community and the Somali community and our, and says to our LGBTQ+ siblings that we will always reject hateful and transphobic acts that work to threaten, to make you feel unsafe. A true Boston is one where churches, synagogues, and mosques all have reasons to celebrate the makeup of this body and can use our shared principles from our respective faith traditions to heal our city and world. A true Boston is an inclusive Boston, a sports town that loves its colleges, its college students, and neighborhoods. And to bring out the best in true Boston, this body will continue to work on the shared prosperity of our residents, addressing the barriers that renters face with upfront rental costs that are often cost prohibitive and rooting out housing discrimination, working with community land trusts on alternative models of ownership that prevent displacement and expand support that we can lend residents for more affordable housing while making it easier to build that affordable housing, addressing issues of waste in our neighborhoods and increasing trash pickup in large buildings, constructing buildings that attract students to our public schools, meet their potential and affirm their dignity, while holding BPS accountable when necessary to ensure excellent leadership for our schools. We must combat deeply rooted economic inequality by expanding access to city contracts and city space and city land and liquor licenses. Working in partnership with our unions to make sure that Boston remains a union town where we put the needs of the collective people before profit. Rooting out, rooting our public safety needs in a vision of community safety where every neighborhood and resident has the tools and community assets needed to thrive. Expanding our work with nonprofits to help us solve some of the most difficult issues of community violence and recidivism. And working on a reputation of Boston as a fun city, where everyone has a place to enjoy themselves downtown and in the heart of our city and in our neighborhoods, while supporting public transportation that makes a robust nightlife safe and possible and makes getting to work safe and possible. I believe in all of us, and I believe in Boston. One thing to know about me is that I unequivocally reject any zero-sum mentality that suggests, thank you Reverend, that suggests that for one group to succeed, another must lose. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can address historic inequities and continue to bring everyone along. I'm excited for what's to come for our city and believe that our collective work together can transform our beloved city into one where every person feels honored, safe, housed, and healthy. So I am hopeful and I am grateful because the only way we get through, the only way we thrive, the only way we push forward is together. So onward you work. I would now like to call up the mayor, Mayor Michelle Wu, if you would like to come and share a few words. I thought it was tradition, you know.
I said enough today already.
Okay, okay, but like.
I'll just say, congratulations to this council once more. This is truly a sacred space. It is the hall of the people where everyone's voices are heard and everyone in our city finds the advocacy that they deserve, the recognition, the belonging that they deserve. That's reflected in each of you sitting around these beautiful desks, and it's reflected in your new city council president. So congratulations to Ruthie, Madam President. And I can't wait for all the things that we'll get to work on together this year. Congratulations.
Roxbury Belizea, baby.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, we will resume with reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0118 through number 0124.
Docket number 0118, notice received from the mayor of the reappointment of Rafaela Polanco Garza as a member of the Boston School Committee. Docket number 0119, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Chantal Lima Barbosa as a member of the Boston School Committee. Docket number 0120, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Priscilla McKenzie Kenzie Bach as a member of the Commemoration Commission. Docket number 0121, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter Six of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of December 6, 2023. And docket number 0122, communication was received from the professional firefighters of Massachusetts requesting the Boston City Council reconsider their position and approve the grant from the fiscal year 2023 Urban Area Security Initiative. Docket number 0123, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for a city council action on the designation of the Richardson Block downtown Boston. And docket number 0124, communication was received from the Boston Air Pollution Control Commission regarding the building emissions reduction and disclosure ordinance regulations, statements of fiscal effect, and small business impact report.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Welcome.
Moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0125. Okay, I'm just learning, y'all. Okay. Thank you. Dockets number 0118 to 0124 will be placed on file. Moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0125. Okay. Oh, you have to read them fully. Okay, go.
Personnel orders, docket number 0125. Counselor Braden for Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0125. All of those in favor say a, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0126.
Docket number 0126 is Counselor Braden for Counselor Mejia.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0126. All those in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0127.
Docket number 120127, Counselor Braden for Counselor Fitzgerald.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0127. All those in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. Aye. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0128.
Docket number 0128, Counselor Braden for Counselor Weber.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0128. All those in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0129.
Docket number 0129, Counselor Braden for Counselor Satana.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0129. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Now moving on to any late files, are there? We will take a vote to add these matters to the consent agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matter, which everyone should have on their desk, it is a resolution in memoriam, I believe, of Counselor Durkin's late on, great on. The chair seeks suspension of this late. Thank you, the late, okay. We will take a vote to add this matter to the agenda. All those in favor of adding this late file matter, say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you, the late file matter has been added to the agenda. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there was that one addition to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Thank you, the consent agenda has been adopted. Now moving on to announcements. Are there any announcements? Counselor Braden, you now have the floor.
Madam President, I learned this morning of the passing of one of our community treasures.
One moment, sorry, Counselor Braden. Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I learned this morning of the passing of one of our very much beloved community residents, Mimi Hanley in Alston Brighton. She's 99 years old and the mother of 14 children. She passed peacefully last evening. And I just want to remember her as we adjourn this afternoon. And also to remember Anne McGuire, who was very, Counselor Flynn will be able to speak to her contribution, immense contribution to the city of Boston over many years as a community activist and political mastermind behind campaigns. And also the LGBT liaison for the Office of Neighborhood Services going way back. She passed this past few days, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. And just, so you know, may, we honor and remember her. I had the opportunity to get to know her, and I'm saddened, I think it was Siobhan who told me of her passing, and so may she rest in peace. We do have, I wanted to know if there are any announcements. And then we do have a memorial section. So if there are any other announcements, and then. Okay, Counselor Flynn, do you have an announcement? Yep.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to echo with my colleague from Alston Brighton mentioned our wonderful friend Anne McGuire, who was a pioneer in the city on civil rights and human rights in support of the LGBTQ community, but also making sure that people in need, especially the homeless, had a place to go, had food on the table. She was always there for Boston, especially during very difficult times. So I wanna, I wanna acknowledge her professionalism, her dedication. She also did a tremendous amount of work for Mayor Flynn, but also for Mayor Menino as well. But she will be missed in this city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Are there any other announcements? Today, moving on to memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Flynn, Stephen Chen. For Counselors Flynn and Murphy, James English. For Counselor Durkin, Mary Ann Kinsey. For Counselor Braden, and Counselor Flynn, Anne McGuire. Avette Mimi Hanley. Dermot Meager, first openly gay judge in Massachusetts. For Counselor Louis Jean, Charles Chuck Monahan. Louis Girard, Louis Jean, my dear cousin. Jean Jerson Adrian, father of former Everett City Councilor Gerlee Adrian. Stephen Schustman. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the I and L chamber on Wednesday, January 10, 2024, at noon. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The council is adjourned. The council is adjourned.